We're going to call a meeting to order. First item is roll called, Diane.
Mayor Skook.
President.
Vice Mayor Nye. Here. Councilmember Anderson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Absent.
Is absent this evening. Councilmember Rooney.
Here.
And Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Will you have a quorum there?
Thank you, Diane. Okay, next item is presentation Wellness and Wellness Award. Carolyn, you and Bobby, I believe, and I don't know about Karen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Yeah, lift her up just a little, Carolyn.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Is that better? Okay. Wanted to share with you this award that's presented from the Healthy Arizona Worksite Programs, which is started, was started by the Arizona Department of Health and Maricopa County Health Department, and it involves at this point over 127 businesses, private and public. They, they have free training and resources to, to aid employers in providing healthy work site and ideas. And so our wellness program that you have so faithfully supported, and, and we are thankful for that, not just the budget, but just the support, and, and we have a great wellness team. We have at least one person from each department, and we meet month, once a month to try to continue to have ideas and plan events, and Bobby Karen is our chairman of that, and we've got several of our wellness representatives here. And of course, we can't go without thanking HR Director Karen Smith for first prompting us to have a wellness program. But we wanted to show you that we achieved the platinum, and Bobby, you can share on that.
Um, it was, it was really awesome to be able to go down to Phoenix and see how many actual workplaces participate in this program, to see how worthwhile wellness really is. Being able to be platinum, and we were only one of four municipalities that got the platinum level out of, what was it, 27? Yeah, out of 27 total around the entire state, state of Arizona. So, just wanted to say thank you guys all so much for supporting the program and letting us continue it, because very worthwhile, we love doing it, and I think all the employees here do as well.
I think you should introduce your other wellness.
You mean the ones that are, that have signs or something?
I don't have here.
I'm not sure what they are.
Right here. We have a few more of the Wellness Committee in the Peanut Gallery, if you will. We have Latoya Muse, she's right there, and then we also have Caitlin Terrence. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, and Shelby Marks. Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Anything else, Carolyn?
We will have this displayed in the well, which you also so generously supported us as getting that all fixed as a wellness lounge and fitness room and place to congregate and collaborate. So that's where this will be, along with last year's, which was the highest at the time as the gold. So we'll have our gold and our platinum as we build a wall.
I think your crew is coming up.
Crew? Okay. That is awesome.
All right, you had a comment?
Yeah. I'll read it later down. One-word team, bravo.
Jody, you had a comment?
I, you know, this is just such a great team. And, you know, like, when I see these extra heads popping up, you know, I'm thinking that's gotta be Latoya, is that you? Yeah, oh yeah, okay, yeah. But, you know, that's part of what the camaraderie, and you're doing really good things, and you're having fun doing it, which is the best. Thank you.
Marty?
Yeah, I mean, the Wellness Award, I mean, it's, it's a great thing to have on so many different levels. I mean, I get to see the emails that go back and forth, so it's a friendly competition among our staff, okay? And to make everyone aware of wellness and health and nutrition and all that other good stuff that I see on the emails, I think it's just great for every individual that participates, you know, because they're all, they're earning dog tags to a different awards, okay? So, it's great as an, as an individual within the community, but also on a team event, it's really fun to see happen, and the fact that everybody is doing it, and, you know, I mean, just look at all the smiles right here, you know, and all the fun we're having, you know, and it's just this. But I, I know, I see that, and it's shared throughout our, you know, the whole civic center when I go through, you know, when they're all talking about it and comparing notes and, you know, the, and you post the competition on a regular basis, Carolyn, so you're great at doing that. So, just congratulations, I mean, it's just a lot of fun, and it's, and it's really, really good for, for our team. Thank you.
This is just one example, an employee shared on, no questions asked, just forthcoming, said, you know, he's an avid ping pong player, which is a wonderful way that people take their breaks and do some healthy competition and exercise, and he actually shared that he had just gotten his blood work done and had his health screening with his doctor, and for, this is the second year in a row that his cholesterol has gone down, and he hasn't done anything differently except for the thing he could relate it to was doing, getting regular exercise and ping pong being one of those things that made him move. And he, he felt very sure that that was what was helping it, so that was, it was great, and he's aware, you know, it's making that awareness, it's not being fearful of your health, but being aware of, of your body, so.
Rick, you had a comment? Mike, no?
Yeah, I can just lend my congratulations to you, you know, it makes me sick that health and wellness is such a well-regarded now thing, but, no, I'm kidding. But, you know, it is very, I think, something you should really promote, because getting that platinum award, I'm sure, is very hard to come by, and it, it shows in your passion, you know, I think that's all, you embrace it, you have passion, you enjoy it, and it really has a big impact on our, our employees, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Just keep it up, congratulations, good job. Discussion, Budget Reallocation. Neil?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm here before you tonight to talk about a budget real allocation, even though we are pretty much right at the beginning of our fiscal year. We would like to make a significant change from what we had budgeted for this year, and so I wanted to come and talk to you about that tonight, and I'm sure you're all fairly familiar with this. So, as you know, a couple weeks back, we, as the town issued a water conservation alert, and the reason for that had to do with the fact that we had mechanical problems with multiple wells. And, so, why did that happen, and where are we going with this? So, the reason that happened was, number one, we had a very dry winter, we had no rain since, you know, late, last summer, and normally we would get winter rains. So we had no rains, and so we were pumping our wells longer and harder than we had in previous years, without any time for them to rest. And then when the peak summer demands hit, of course, that was just too much, so we lost a couple wells, and we had to jump on top of that and get those repaired. But in that period in between, the time when those wells were out, we needed to be able to provide water to our citizens, and basically it was the peak demands that we needed to bring those down a little bit, and so we issued the Level Two Water Conservation Alert. So, how does that translate into tonight's discussion? We are looking to change our budget around a little bit. The current budget, we actually do have $1.6 million in the budget for installing two new wells this fiscal year, that was in the budget. And essentially, those would address the issues related to our capacity needs for growth. What we're actually wanting to do now is install two additional wells on top of that, so we want to install a total of four wells this year. We already had two budgeted, so we need budget for two more. So, not only will we be able to, you know, keep up with growth like we've been doing, but when we have issues that are unexpected like we had this past winter, hopefully that won't happen again. So, what do we need to do? We do have a lot of money in the budget already for water-related projects. We have a couple of tank projects that we're going to be doing this year. So, propose, what we're proposing to do is put in the two additional wells, which will need an additional $1.6 million worth of funding this fiscal year. We would delay one of our tank projects, so of the two, we would delay one of them. Design work on both of them will move forward this year. We will complete the Stone Ridge Water Tank this year, and the water line that goes up to that tank is already under construction, so completing that whole portion of the project to us makes the most sense. And then the project that we call the Summit Two Tank, which is the one up on Glassford Hill, we would start it early next fiscal year. And so that would give us funding, shift to, to complete two additional wells on top of what we already have budgeted. So here's how that lays out. You can see up here, I've got the current fiscal year 18, 19 budget shown, and where we were allocating those funds. So between the Summit Two Water Tank and the Stone Ridge Water Tank, we've got five and a half million dollars budgeted there, along with the $800,000 for the other two wells that we were planning on installing. So by pushing off the Summit Two Tank, we've got an extra $2.5 million, we would allocate potentially $1.6 million of that. We would complete four well projects and still get one of the tank projects done. And as you can see, by doing that, we would also have about another $900,000 that's not allocated to anything, the difference between the 7.1 and the 6.2 million dollars that you see up there. So we'd still have another $900,000 out there floating around to potentially supplement if the, if the well projects came in more than we anticipate, or if we want to get a slightly earlier start on completing the tank projects, depending on what those come in at. So that's what we're looking to do with the budget. And that's basically just budget authority, that's not, you know, has nothing to do with money that we have in the bank, so what does our bank account have in it? Right now, in our water funds, we have $13.2 million in cash reserves. So 6.2 million of that potentially would be spent this year, leaving another $7 million in reserves next year. So we do have adequate funding for the projects that we're proposing for both tanks and the four wells over the next two-year period of time. It's not a, we won't be running out of money for that. It's just a matter of reallocating it and, and pushing the schedule back just a little bit, because potentially, the, one of the tank projects may have not happened until, until spring anyways, you know? So pushing it back a couple of months at the start of the new fiscal year. So that's what we're looking at doing, and I wanted to come and talk to you and get your input on, on your thoughts on this, whether you think this is a good idea or not, and if you have any concerns.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
If I could, I would like to add something to what Neil said, and, and very simply, we've, we've got the money to do it, we're just readjusting priorities. But it's very important to understand that with the conservation declaration that was done the week before Independence Day, that is not indicative of the water available for this community. Let me say that again, okay, because I have heard this, is that, oh my goodness, we're running out of water. Absolutely not, that's not the case. All of the hydrology shows, and all of the, the science shows, we're sitting on top of an aquifer that is in excess of 250 to 300 years' worth of water directly beneath your feet right now. That's not the issue. The issue that caused that was having, I believe it's 26 water wells, and of those, a good chunk of them are over 20 years old, and they got worked. Think, think of having 26 cars, and you're driving the living dickens out of them, are you gonna have a mechanical problem? More than likely, and that's what happened. And, so, Neil has a solution to that issue.
You had a comment, Laura?
I do. Before we go any further, for our people listening at home, you used the term "lost a couple wells." Now, define what happened to those wells.
Yeah, we didn't lose them, we still know where they are.
Because that would confuse a lot of people, because that terminology's already been put forth to me, and I've explained it, so be clear.
Okay. Yes, those wells had a failure, so they were mechanically, they were not available for us to use them at that time until we got them fixed, which we now have them fixed, and they're back and in service producing water. And we have a couple of other wells that have been out of service for a longer period of time that we took out of service 10 years ago when we didn't need them, and we're bringing those back into service as well. So we have plenty of capability, it was just the mechanical, temporary mechanical failure of those wells that we are now correcting.
Thank you, Neil, that's much more defining information for people. Lost has a different connotation, like it's gone away and it's never gonna be here again. Yeah, that too. The important thing here is, I don't think some of us that have been around for a long time are too surprised that some of our wells got worn out. So that's why your proposal is so important, because not only is it gonna bring additional wells online, you're now taking preventative measure so that we may not have this situation with the mechanics causing wells to go down and causing us to have that very short temporary request to get back on water.
We are, yes, and we are taking additional preventative measures.
Yes.
We have, I mean, we do routinely.
You already have them.
And those sorts of things, but it was just the combination of issues, and, and we're gonna try and circumvent that from happening again.
Fine, you said that perfectly, that's what I want to make clear. These are additional measures to what we already have in place, and I commend you for that.
Yeah, just a quick question, and just to clarify, the additional two wells that we're planning on installing, these were already planned for next year or the year after to be installed and replaced, is that correct?
So two wells were going to be done this year currently?
Yeah, the two we're gonna do this year, but the two additional wells that you're asking, that you're, we're talking about.
They would have been in future year planning, whether, whether it was next year or the year after that, they would, they were, they're out there in the planning, and we're just bringing them forward to.
So, so everything that we're doing has been in the plans, we're just shuffling it around in the order that we're doing it in order to accommodate the situations that we have right now with the, with the wells that had gone, that had stopped working, and we're just making sure that it doesn't happen again.
Yes.
Any other comment, Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. So Neil, for future year planning, on average, how often would we bring on a new well then to compensate for the older mechanics?
Well, so typically, for every 3,000 homes, we need one or two wells, and it, and it really depends on how much those wells pump out of the ground, because, you know, the, the developer will come and they will have a certificate of assured water supply that says they have the water available in the ground, and then it's just a matter of getting that water out of the ground. So, it depends on where they drill and what the hydrogeology of that area is. We've got some wells that are capable of producing 2,500 gallons a minute of water, okay? That's a sizable amount. We have other areas of town where we've drilled wells and we've gotten 100 gallons a minute, and that's not very sizable. So, it really depends on, on the capacity of the actual well.
Okay, thank you.
Mike had a comment?
Yeah, we were talking earlier before the meeting, and you said we had approximately 20 wells, what will our total be with these when they're all up and running?
We have, we have 26 wells, and of those, 21 of them are currently active.
All right.
With these additional four, that will bring our total up to about 30, and as we're moving forward, we're also bringing some of these other wells back online that have been offline for a while.
Right.
And so we're, we're continuing to do that.
Yeah, because I'd mentioned to you, also, I had a phone call from one of our residents about this, and he was asking, what are we gonna do? And I said, well, stay tuned, and I assume we would be looking at this next week, and you may bring it back to us next week, so hopefully John will tune in and, and see what we're doing to try to preclude any unintended consequences, because we'll have additional wells on standby, so I, I appreciate that. And I did want to mention as well that when John Munderlo was here the other day, I don't think people realize that even though we have a, an increase in population, that our, our utilization, our water use is really around our 2006 level, so whether it's use or conservation or a little of both, I think it shows that we're doing a great job, our community is, and that this is a little hiccup that we encountered, and we're going to handle that to preclude any future problems, so appreciate it.
That's the plan.
Yes, it is.
Anything else, Neil?
I, I guess, just, just addressing Councilman Whiting's comment about bringing this forward next week, I, I guess what my, what my thought is, is that if you don't have any concerns about this plan moving forward, the way that we would approach it is, as we come forward with projects that we would like to have approved, there will be a, a budget transfer component associated with that action item, so we'll just, we won't come back and, and do one official thing, we'll do it as we need the money, if that makes sense.
Laura?
I noted that the wells, the new additional ones, will be both on the perimeter of Mingus West and in the central part of Prescott Valley. Does that indicate that Mingus West is starting to develop beyond our capacity out there? Is this, us just being extra careful and forward-thinking?
It, it's a combination of being careful, and, and obviously with the fairgrounds coming back online.
Right.
Being able to meet those demands, as you'll remember, maybe about eight or 10 years ago, we did have a situation where we had to go to the residents in Mingus West and ask them to conserve water for a short period of time. We have two wells that serve that area, and one of them was down for general servicing, and the second one, we had an issue with the controls on it, it was either a lightning strike or something, and it went down, so we didn't have either one of them operational. We do have storage up in that area, and the storage was plenty to get us through the time period to get them fixed, but bringing another well online will increase that redundancy and help us, depending on what happens with the fairgrounds.
And very directly, if you take a drive. And very directly, if you take a drive through Mingus West right now, you'll see a whole bunch of new housing starts, and over the last 24...
That's what I asked for.
Yeah, the last 24 months, you have seen a virtual explosion of new homes and new housing starts in Mingus West, which is a really good thing.
It is, and you're anticipating, and I like that.
Yeah.
That's preventive, and I like that.
Any other comments? Mike, someone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, because I've been talking about this all day, but I think even as we talk about these new developments and when they were approved and how they're building out, and these are projects that we've already approved before, and so their water allocations have been approved, and they won't be coming out of our aquifer, other than, you know, our New Jasper developments, so just wanted to let everybody know.
And to that point, it's very important to further state that the dollars that we're talking about, that Neil is planning to utilize for additional capacity and storage, where do those dollars come from?
No.
Not from our rate payers, not from your water bill or your water bill. Each home that is built has to pay a capacity fee, not only for water, but also for sewer. And so the accumulation of those capacity fees and hookup fees pay for this new infrastructure, and very rightfully so, because you all had the foresight to put those mechanisms in place years ago. And so for that, we thank you.
Rick?
This is kind of off the topic a little bit, because it has nothing to do with the wells, the reallocation. But, you know, looking at the fact that we did have this issue, and I've had several people ask me about this, but we do a very good job with our tiered rate system, but it might just be time for us to consider other methods of conservation. We've avoided talking about that for a long, long time. I know the nine years that I've been on the council, we haven't talked about it, and, you know, this might just be the time to come up with some kind of mechanism to talk about some other kinds of conservation that we could implement in Prescott Valley, and I'd be willing to be part of that conversation.
Okay, and to that point, John Munderloh is in the process of doing a pilot project for the capture of rainwater, and depending on the results of that pilot project, that is a very good way, possibly, okay? And I don't want to assume that it's going to be wildly successful, but we'll see.
But it's important to realize, there's been heavy, heavy rain on that project. There's been so much rain on that project that the buildings that it was on have been flooded.
Any other thoughts?
We're getting a good test.
Anything else, Neil?
That's it.
Everybody agreeable to this coming back?
Absolutely.
As he needs it.
I think people are very happy with your suggestion, you've done a good job, Neil. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then move on to number five, discussion, Yavapai overlay design norm, you are up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council. Let me get an overhead that'll help explain this project. The exhibit and the council action that we're going to discuss tonight is the, our annual overlay project. I think council's aware that we spend about $2.5 million a year on our pavement maintenance program. Part of that is the overlay budget, we have about $500,000 budgeted. Council may recall, since we started our enhanced pavement program, that we did the viewpoint overlay first, and then we did spouse last year. Well, this year, staff is recommending, and we've got the wrong one, because I got the Yavapai overlay. False start, wrong neck of the woods, so I'm back with you now. So what we're going to talk about tonight is the actual Yavapai drive overlay, and that's what you've got for an overhead in front of you.
That's better.
That's better, and can see that now? All right, I'm getting with it here. Okay, so this year's particular program, we've had intense enhancement of the chip seal and roadside maintenance, you know, the pre-chip maintenance program in this area. So this particular project, as you can see, the overlay limits is between Robert to Navajo, I think council's well aware that the central Yavapai Fire District, Bob Drive, a lot of those town buildings and services over that way, and of course, there's quite a bit of traffic on that little stretch of Yavapai where you see that complete remove and replace. So we're actually going to do some more rehab in that particular area, the pavement's pretty well shot in there. So that is the project limits, that's this year's overlay budget, and what we're proposing for you here is to go ahead and do an amendment to the Town Engineering Agreement so we can get this design done, and in time that we can actually perform this overlay, we hope is, we typically do around October. Good time of year, you know, some of the warmer temperatures are done, but it's a good time, there's a good contractor interest this time of year, so what we're proposing is to let Dave and Associates do this design for us for construction bid plans. Any questions I can answer about this overlay limits here?
Ms. Rick?
It's beginning to seem like Christmas in July, and I'm the Grinch. It was interesting that the viewpoint graphic came up first.
Yeah.
Because we'll get to that with talking about having to chip seal the top of that. My concern is that this repair that we're doing to Yavapai Road is the same basic repair we did to viewpoint, is that right? We're going down to dirt?
No, no, only in the section that you see there in red, that's a complete...
Right, in that one section.
Right.
But the rest of it in yellow is an overlay.
Building up, then the other one, we're just resurfacing. Right, and we'll talk about that item later.
Chip seal, that other section. What are we doing differently on that dirt section where we're not going to have the issue that we have now on viewpoint?
I can talk about that, but this one is particularly due to the time of year, we're not going to perform the final surface that we're going to talk about in later items, the chip seal, until next year. So this is just simply overlay of asphaltic pavement.
Okay, so we should avoid that problem by doing it differently?
Correct, right.
Okay.
Because, as we say, when we perform this in October, as you're well aware, chip seal application really ends about September 1st, we won't even start this till the first week or two in October, so we'll let the pavement cure out, and we'll do it the next following summer of 19.
Okay, so we shouldn't have that slippery road issue. Thank you.
Laura, comment?
For the people listening at home, would you tell them what that two-inch overlay consists of?
Two inches of asphaltic pavement, simpler terms asphaltic cake, but it's the typical paving project you see as a permanent surface. So what it does is actually add to that existing pavement surface on particularly Yavapai, so it'll add more structural integrity.
Yeah, I wanted them to hear asphalt, not chip seal.
You know, Councilman, I did want to add something too, that this next exhibit you've seen is an excerpt from what we put on the website, and if you look at Yavapai Road, we've talked about, you know, catching up our 10-year program to a five-year. As you can see up here, that particular stretch of road is still the black color, if you look in the legend, that's actually 11 years old. I'd just like to point out, that's the last section of road, just like to point out, we had higher priorities with overlay, so we've kept this particular section of road maintained, but just to show you, we didn't perform a chip seal like the rest of the neighborhood has had, because that shows that we don't spend any money unless we have to, because we've had this planned, so that's just good fiscal management of this particular expenditure. So when we do the overlay, this will be the last road, and as we talked about, we'll keep catching up years, so just like to point that out to council.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
It's all good news.
One more. I have noticed three striping that's been done, and that's really good to see. I'm really pleased with that.
Right, and that's part of our annual, council may recall, we award that in May in a new budget year, so we typically start striping the minute we get new money, and we stripe throughout the year, but typically, you've seen it.
That really helps.
Yes, it does.
Other comments? Norm, I think you're making good progress, and we appreciate that.
Good, we'll bring this back next week for award of design services.
Freeable?
Yes.
Very good, we'll do that.
Okay, move on to number six, construction, or discussion, rather, Glassford Hill median design. Norm?
Yeah, Mayor, this next exhibit will probably help explain what we're talking about, this median design project. This particular exhibit, I thought, was the best to exhibit the median design limits, which would be from Long Look Drive up to SR 89A. I think council's well aware that the median has tree improvements as we continue to widen Glassford, have expenditure, that we have median improvements in form of trees, some bushes in some areas. I think council may recall, last year we did the Long Look project with development impact fees, the intersection, we came back with some residual budget funding, we actually added six trees in front of Panther Path, so we're actually extended all the way to Long Look with irrigation and trees, and I think they look absolutely wonderful. So explaining a little background of this particular project, here, basically 20 years ago, when the Granville development started, growth pays for growth in Prescott Valley, not only developers pay for their roadways within our subdivision fully, they also have, due to good engineering analysis, traffic impact analysis, they have circulation costs for improvement to the infrastructure, to make sure that any impact they have, particularly negative on the system. Well, in the Granville agreement that's 20 years old, that agreement was a cost sharing, that they were going to supply the asphalt for a third lane, asphalt only, as we talked in the last item. Well, the town was supposed to do the base. Well, with that particular deal, that just isn't aligning right with, as we're well aware, Glassford Hill Road, what it's turned into over the last 20 years, who would ever guess? The current pavement section is basically six on 19 inches, almost two feet of pavement, so that's a substantial investment in the base in order to hold up to the truck traffic. So the Granville companies really has a desire to, they like trees, you can see it in their particular development, all their medians have trees, so we've been approached by the Granville development that they would like to trade their particular commensurate cost of that extra lane per their development agreement, and actually trade that to finish and complete the landscape median enhancements, all the way from Long Look up to 89A. So really, what we're asking council to do is, let's get started on design, let's talk about what that's going to cost. We'll include not only trees, landscape rock and irrigation, and fabric to keep the weeds from growing it, but also include concrete curb. So that's a pretty substantial improvement, and it's probably, you know, Glassford's length's about four miles, so we're actually just a little over two miles in this particular effort to improve that. So what we're proposing for council is, do the particular design plans and engineering estimates, say, "Okay, what would the asphalt cost be? What's the landscape improvements cost?" Send it out for public bid, hopefully eventually, and say, "Okay, he's absolved of his development agreement in lieu of the cost of that by providing trees and landscape median," which I think would be very popular growth pattern to get that trees going in the median. It's been very well received throughout Prescott Valley. I think you recall in the past that we typically are able to plant trees first, and sometimes we do the roadway widens after. So is it really time yet for the third lane? I might tell you, it's starting to get that way, but if we can get the median done, we can get the trees going, and I think we could, you know, realize a better benefit in the future of doing the lanes, you know, with the public dollars if we make this particular exchange. So that's what's on the table, and what we'd like to do is award an amendment to the Town Engineering Agreement to have Dave and Associates perform this design and the engineering analysis for determining what that swap of particular fees would be. Any questions I can answer?
Questions? Laura?
I do. I want to be sure that I totally understand. Granville will be paying for the, Corcoran will be paying for the landscaping, we will be paying for the engineering?
Correct, at this point, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure I understood that.
Other que, Mike, you had a comment?
Yeah, I have a related, since you brought it up, and that is, you know, we've talked about, I think, the last couple of meetings, you know, looking at the future of Glassford Hill, and this won't have any impact on that, but I'm just wondering, as we expand Glassford Hill, it'll go to east-west in the right-of-way, so there won't be a need to touch the medians or the existing lanes?
No, that's the good thing about the good growth patterns and planning we've had, is you can basically build that outer lane without disrupting traffic to a certain degree, so the construction should be easier without delays of the public or even added costs for, you know, traffic control during construction. You know, I did want to add, you know, this exhibit gets really busy, but I think a lot of it exemplifies what we keep adding on, that this is probably the one we use to hand out to the public just about everywhere, to show everything we're doing with. We've had a lot of concerns staff-wise when we do public outreach about the Jasper development, you can see those two sections are taken down. What are we doing to accommodate, you know, the growth? Well, we're showing, here's where the developers are, you know, making good on their development agreements, on providing not only capacity, but, you know, the median improvements that they have to do. So we'd like to show, you know, the future units of Granville are actually ghosted on there in white, so current 11th and 12th units are shown on there, we've got some preliminary plating for Jasper shown there, and of course, I think council's aware, we've talked in the past about, you know, the state land roadway, we're making application there. So all this particular growth, we're able to answer the public in one exhibit. I did want to add, our GIS department made this up for me, and I looked at it, and I says, "Come on, guys, why do you have brown? Why don't you put green for trees?" And Larry Prentice says, "Norm, you've used up every color." So I had to go brown. So we're getting pretty busy here, lots of color, but I think this shows growth patterns and what everything is coming to do. So in the legend there, you see the landscape median improvements, that particular scope of improvement, basically from Long Look all the way up to 89A, and I think council's aware, we've already had a good start on the landscape at 89A that street staff did here about 15 years ago, and those are very big mature trees, so it really adds the softness, I think, to the streetscape is what we desire in Prescott Valley.
Good. Everybody comfortable with that?
One more question, that is, and I may be mistaken, but I thought in the past couple of weeks, months, whatever the case might be, that we'll be looking at Glassford Hill a little more seriously in the future in terms of impact relative to things like Jasper and just incremental, you know, traffic on Glassford Hill.
Yeah, and I think my next item I'm going to present, I'm going to have a bunch more exhibits to show you, so hold that thought, and we'll get to you.
Sounds good.
Other comments, questions? Any else, Norm?
No, that's it, Mayor, we'll bring it back next week for award of the design.
Get the feeling that the council is very appreciative.
Yeah, I think everyone's real appreciative of trees, it's a popular item.
It helps when you get somebody else...
We look forward to, and I did want to point out too, we do have a landscape architect as a subcontractor proposed, so he'll be able to get us those urban cultivated varieties that do well at this elevation, typically we have in other medians to help us with that particular species.
Go for it, okay?
Yes.
Bring her back, Norm.
We'll see you next week.
We'll move on to number seven, discussion, Glassford Hill Extension State Land ROW Acquisition.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, council, this next item we have before you, this exhibit is pretty self-explanatory. We've talked about Glassford Hill Road, how much it's grown, basically incrementally, and the length's in between 89A and 69, but of course, there's always been long-range planning to actually take Glassford Hill north to serve properties undeveloped there for service. This particular item, the town's been approached from the development interest for a parcel of land to the west, which is Section 33 for development, and they need access because, and I'll show you some other exhibits, but what they would require is an extension of Glassford Hill Road to access their section through the state land section. If you look at this exhibit up here, actually, the, we have acquired through the town or either Ada, but you can see, we've already acquired right-of-way from state land for Glassford Hill Road south of 89A, as you see in that depiction, in addition to, long ago, when 89A, they did some expansion through state land to get 89A alignment. So what we're proposing is to provide that access of Glassford Hill to the north, it's been a long-range plan forever, and I'll go into a few more exhibits. The other thing I want to point out, is you can see in this exhibit that existing Pronghorn Ranch Parkway that extends west to the section line, to the state land section line from existing viewpoint, we're proposing not only to approach state land to gain right-of-way for Glassford Hill Road, but also Pronghorn Ranch Parkway to provide that connectivity to the subdivisions, obviously to the east. So that's what's being proposed. Few more long-range planning ideas, we just developed this particular exhibit today, and I wanted to take a, you know, little more time to talk to council. We had some concern in the viewpoint fire about, hey, do we really have access, you know, rather than just what I think people think about the one-way access being viewpoint drive and then Antelope Meadows Drive through both Pronghorn and viewpoint subdivisions. I think, council, if you look at those particular notations of where those subdivisions are at, just wanted to point out that we do have east-west connections planned already in place. I think council's aware that since 2007, even out of the viewpoint Pronghorn area, you can still go east along Antelope Meadows Drive all the way to Cotty Springs Road. So we've heard from residents that we didn't have any alternative access. I said, "Well, they have been, so they're in place today." Outside, you can see where the county unincorporated rings the east of there, but there was access there. I think council's aware that Parkview Drive is in place for the emergency access with the gates we opened, so that particular access is perfected, as you can see in the, denoted by the yellow between the two subdivisions. So you have Pronghorn Ranch Parkway right near 89A as an east-west connector, you've got the connection, if need be, for emergency use at Parkview. But I also point out, actually, as those subdivisions develop to the north, there is proposals that there's another east-west route, similar to those two existing ways, that are planned in the planning documents that we need to perfect and build. So what's important to show up here is, when you look in the bottom here, where you see the extension of Glassford Hill Road, is the last exhibit, we've actually overlaid some of the master planning exhibits that have been... some of the master planning exhibits that have been done in the past to show, we're always building that roadway network regionally, the common plans with our other regional partners, with other municipalities, City of Prescott, Yavapai County, through Central Yavapai Planning Organization. You can see a lot of these roadway connections are always planned. So this exhibit helps depict that when we do extend Glassford Hill to the north, if we gain the right-of-way from state land, we're always planning to make those roadway connections, as we always have done, through town incorporated subdivision. So there's always those east-west connections, so that, you know, you don't have to go out to the 89A alignment. So we continue to build our internal roadway network to access these higher volume roads and higher design standard roads. So I hope you can see some of that particular planning. This next exhibit, actually to show how long we've been planning, this was from a study I helped participate in, the town did through, Yavapai County funded this study, but you can see it right on there, it was pretty small to see, but that was adopted in 2008. You can see that that is a particular freeway corridor that's been reserved through master plan, looking at that long-range horizon when we need to have an alternative highway, freeway route, grade separated interchange from the existing 89A. So as you can see, Glassford Hill Road is down in the bottom and you can see some of the interchange has been planned in the future. So if I go back, this is what sets some of the background work for the exhibit. Let me go up ahead it right. When you look, that particular exhibit has been overlaid in here, that's where you see that red, that's future freeway alignment, that's been put on this exhibit. So what I wanted to show council with this exhibit is existing roadways that are in place, how we always have a continued plan in place in order to continue to build out not only the large regional roads, but the connectivity to the routes of proposed highway planning in the area. So always have a plan in place and always plan for that connectivity and get them in our documents, actually in our general plan, so that we always make sure we're continuing to build a roadway network. Just to show you some other planning documents, of course, 2013, this particular roadway alignment was part of our Chapter Six, which is a circulation element of our general plan. We make sure we follow our general plan and always take public comment. Of course, I think after the general plan was in place, our regional transportation plan update in 2015 calls out all these roads, all these connections, so we're right in line with what's always been done in the planning when we expend public dollars for roadway connectivity. As a matter of course, just to bring council up to date, we just had proposals from consultants to update our regional transportation plan through Central Yavapai Planning Organization for the 2045 plan. So over the next year, we'll actually update this plan, we update that plan every five years through CYMPO. And then just the latest one that shows what we've done, I think council is aware, this past March of 18, the most recent, looking, you know, intently at 89A and looking at all the improvements that can be done on, not only what they cost, but what we need to put in place in a graduated form of what's, you know, highest priority. So just want to point out, these public documents, all these public planning documents, all rolls up into what we plan for. The current proposal in front of council is to approach state land and turn an application in order to continue to build this roadway network that's been planned across, you know, gain right-of-way from state land. So the proposal, after that long background of planning documents that led us up to this point, is we'd like to have Dave and Associates, who has a good experience with dealing with state land, to acquire these rights of way, to make the application, do the cultural and biological assessments needed to approach state land to get this particular right-of-way appraised and find a value for it. That's the end of my comments.
When we do those kind of right-of-ways for the state land, do we have to do the archaeological studies and all of that?
That's, yes.
That's all part?
Archaeological for the state historic preservation and also biological.
That's what takes forever.
It can. It is a long process, but typical process, we're looking to lead time probably two and a half, three years before, if we're successful in all the milestones in order to buy the particular right-of-way. So we'd like to get started on that.
Yeah, Norm, the slide that you have right after this one, the one that's, no, the future, the other way, yeah, the future, that's the one. Is that available on our website or is that something that you have?
That wasn't available till 3:30, Tyler generated it for me. So yes, that's something we can put on the website. In fact, in the corner, you can see that's where I can find it. But we could put it on the website, you know, our Public Works website has lots of links and I like to make sure they're relevant, but yes, I've got.
No, because that's one I'd actually like to look at a little closer because I can't read it from here.
We could, and, yeah, I really wanted to show, you know, that scale is difficult and that's what we talked about, we cut it back, we could, but we definitely want to show the freeway connection that's proposed in the future, you know, where it cuts over to show. And in order to show those links, that was about the biggest we can make it, but I can certainly send you a copy tonight and we can put on the webpage if council thinks that's something that council would like, or the public would like to see and put a link to it.
Yeah, that's actually probably pretty interesting and just to look at it and see what is proposed and, you know, how good it is.
Yeah, good, and that's why I wanted to add a little bit, we heard some feedback from the viewpoint fire that, you know, people didn't know how to get out and I said, well, that's probably good to show them that what roads are in place today or how we continually plan for that ability, because, you know, secondary, not only emergency access, but good secondary access is very important for good circulation planning for traffic.
Thank you. Good. Mike?
Yeah, I just had a few, I wanted to concur. If you could send us, you know, your overlays or your visuals here, some are in our packet, others are not, the one that is brown versus green, we don't have. I'd be interested to see that, so I think that would be of help.
Would you like to see the median landscape improvements?
Yeah.
I think this would be good for us.
Okay.
And I do like your, you had the 2025 general plan up there. And I guess some people don't realize we do plan ahead for these things.
If Richard Parker was here, probably a tear would come to his eye, me talking so favorably of planning. But no, Chapter Six is very important to us and of course, it's very important when we spend, you know, in the neighborhoods of millions and tens of millions of dollars. It's been a long-term plan that everyone has got to comment on and, you know, I get excited when we actually get to start the construction. That's what I enjoy best, is actually being able to touch it and see it put into place and cut that ribbon on it eventually, which we've done over time on Glassford, if you can recall.
Well, I had the opportunity to sit in the planning and zoning when we went through all this and we went chapter by chapter, hearing by hearing, and so we had a lot of public input. And so, you know, I'm mystified sometimes when people think that we're just doing these things in a vacuum and it's not the case, you know, we adhere to plans and we use our community input and then it goes to the public for a vote and that fine plan was voted upon and approved.
Right, and of course, there is hundreds of pages, I just tried to show you the cover sheets, but I think what's important to show is everything plays off of each other. We're doing planning here locally, it fits into the regional plan that Central Yavapai Planning Organization does and back and forth and continually update, that's why I commented that our regional transportation plan is updated every five years with federal dollars. So we're in the process of doing that. So when we get the Jaspers finally coming to the table of what they're going to do, that trip generation is put into the model so that, you know, I think what's important I'd like to point out, we really only build the amount of infrastructure mobility that we really need. We don't get too far ahead of ourselves, but seem to be right in pace with the funding if we put it in place, that, you know, we provide good mobility here, but don't build too much unless you need it. I think Glassford Hill Road's been a prime example. We all remember the days when, you know, was it two, you know, only went to Long Look, two-lane road, now four-lane road, now we're talking about a lane each way. That last ADOT study we talked about, it's actually going to have some capacity off 89A as a priority, that we have a third lane coming off the ramp of 89A for a free-flowing right-hand turn. So all that's in those planning documents. I enjoy participating regionally with ADOT, that we can put those improvements into place and find the funding.
In fact, I'm kind of excited too to see Stone Ridge Extension go through Jasper as another way to get the.
So let me be clear, you'd like to see this exhibit, I can send it to you tonight when I get back and then I'll put it on the Public Works website as a link, just this one.
Norm, I think we're going to try to figure out how to get you a little more work, keep you busy.
Well, yeah, the GIS guys do me very, very good here, they're excited to see the interest in it, I know, but it does make it so simple to see, I agree. Anything else, Mayor?
Any other questions? I think we're ready for it, are we?
Yes.
It'll help if we get that picture. Okay, let's move on to number eight. Discussion. Annual chip seal maintenance, or chip seal maintenance program fiscal year 1819. Change order number one.
Yeah. Mayor, council, this next exhibit is, I think, earlier when we talked about the Yavapai overlay, this was the first overlay performed with our new street enhancement program and that was viewpoint drive. As you can see, the project limits, this is the old exhibit from a couple of years ago. So I want to point out, this was done two years ago in the summer season of 2016, the overlay. So this was particularly done, you see the project limits went basically from 89A and actually included viewpoint drive around and roundup all the way to Robert Road. So this was, I think, around, doggone near a mile of overlay. So we talked about the asphaltic cake, I call it, the asphaltic pavement surface that gives it structure, was placed. And then we actually put the wear service, we call it chip seal, on this particular project as part of closing the project out. And it was done, if I recall, in the springtime, but the chip seal was actually done at good time of weather. Now, what I'd like to point out is, it's been a couple of years, but that pavement has not really been performing the surface like we'd like to see. Structurally, it's good, but in short, all the chips have basically stripped off or been embedded into the oil and we actually have a condition that when it rains, there is a very slickery surface, so to speak. Probably won't find that in the definitions, but it's very slick and we feel like it's a concern for, I use the term performance, but it could be a concern for safety that's too slick because there's not a rough surface out there. So with it being two years since it's been done, could be, we have quite a bit of traffic, we have anywhere from eight to 10,000 cars a day on this, traffic could have beat down the chip seal. The other thing I'd like to point out, there's pavement maintenance is a lot of expenditure. So the chip seal we've applied out here is the lowest form of cost per square yard. I've talked to council before, without getting into too much, I guess, of what I enjoy, which is the minutia of different services. Glassford Hill Road has an asphaltic concrete friction course, which for that traffic is the right application. We used a bare bones minimum application for eight to 10,000 cars a day. I think it just wore out with lots of traffic. To compare and contrast, the surface we use here is about $1.50, $1.75 a square yard. The surface we put on Glassford with 27,000 cars a day costs about $5,000, or not $5,000, $5 a square yard, three times as much. What we probably got, the condition out here was we were constrained with expenditure, it worked for a couple of years. So what we'd like to do, rather than investigate whether it could have been an oil problem, is just go out, put more aggregate and do another chip seal service on this, little different methodology than strictly putting a lot of oil and actually get that rough surface back so we don't have a particular safety problem. So a lot of this, in my opinion, can be just, you know, a bare minimum expenditure to get by and you've got some good service life out of it, but it's time to enhance it a little more. And as I point out, if council looks at, every year when we do our pavement enhancement program, we have what's called a high-volume chip seal. We spent about a dollar more a square yard on our higher volume roads, a little more aggregate. That's why you see the two-tone color sometimes, we put that on our major collectors. So that particularly, sometimes you got what you paid for and it was an expenditure amount. So the good news here is we do have earth resources that's currently performing chip seal. It's the chip seal season, we'd like to, staff's recommendation is to move expeditiously just to utilize them with a change order, the existing contract, have them come in, your local contractor, I've already talked to the contractor, he says, yeah, we can add that to our particular work and just get that rough surface back on so we don't have that condition that it's too slippery and we could have a particular problem with safety out there and just put that rough aggregate surface back there and just put more aggregate out there. So that's what's being proposed for this particular section, is a change order and go get the work done. We would anticipate if we move forward and award next week, we could have it done by mid-August and we give that good safe service again. That concludes my comments.
Norm, you described a little bit about what you believe the cause of the failure is, but what did we learn from that so that we won't repeat that particular failure cause in the future, or can we?
I think I explained, when you use the bare minimum application for a high-traffic roadway, it got beat out and worn out. So that's why we have the high-volume roadway. We've learned too, you know, and keep in mind, chip seal, you can't really dial it in too specifically because we rely on expenditure, one spec, so we have different tiers. The low-volume chip seal at times can get beat down and look like you never did it after a few years, I think that's what we're looking at here. We use the high-volume on higher volume roads and as I point out, the expenditure in this particular, even though it's a near mile of a road, it still probably doesn't meet some of the economies of scale to use what we use on Glassford. So this is kind of in between with the traffic. So what have we learned? Probably the expenditure, we should have gone a little more at the time, but you're always constrained with money. So I think we did get reasonable performance out of the surface. It's just reasonable with us knowing the performance of our pavements and making sure we keep roads safe. We need to, you know, give it a little more effort to it out there.
Good. Thank you. Mike, you got a question?
Well, you know, when I look at it, I think we learned what we've known all along. We can't afford to pay for what's going to last forever. You know, we have limited dollars and we have to spread them as far as we can. And we did that. And I think that the important thing to take away from all of this is that we recognized that we have to repair something and we're taking the action to do that. And I think that's the key to the whole thing, because I think sometimes people just assume that we're just going to turn a blind eye towards it and that, well, we did the work, so that's good enough and we're not going to admit that we have a problem. Well, we know we have a problem, we know what we have to do to fix the problem and you're standing up here tonight saying, can I bring it back to you so we can go get the problem fixed? And I think that we're all recognizing that we're going to do something about this problem and we're going to fix it. And I applaud you for that, I think it's very important. Thank you.
Let's go to Marty next.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Will the work on this area be done during the day or evening? As someone who probably uses that a minimum of two, three times a day, yeah, I'll end up going up around Robert Road, but, you know, I mean, it's a well-used road, okay? I mean, it's not overly burdened, but it is a very well-used road.
To answer your question, Councilman, this work will be done during the day because that's when we're going to get the best performance and make sure we get a good product. So yes, the nice thing is, we've talked about just in the last item of other alternative routes, I might suggest, Councilman, you look at using Robert Road.
Yeah, no, I.
Because we give plenty of public notice and that's what the project sign says, is make your own choice, we're happy if you drive through and wave to us, but you may want to, this will take just a couple of days, it'll be all the inconvenience will be.
Yeah, no, I just want to know when to avoid it. The truck knows how to go without even me driving it.
Mike, you use it twice a day too also?
Do I have 20 minutes? No, I don't.